I'll call this meeting's order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. We'll get right into our first visitors and we'll offer the floor to Diane and Greg. I don't know which one would like to go first.
I won or lost the draw depending on how you look at it from there. But council and everyone, it is an absolute pleasure to be here again tonight. I really do miss some of my time at City Council and I hope to have more time. I do watch you on television and just to let you know, we're preparing, as you know, for the legislative session that's coming up and I appreciate you letting us come in and give a little bit of an update of where we're at and what's happening or what might be happening and maybe what's not going to be happening in 2012. And so I think the overarching piece that's going to impact a lot of the conversation in Montpelier is of course going to be that wonderful woman that came through here in August, Irene. It is going to probably dominate almost the conversation, maybe not dominate, but definitely influence a lot of almost every committee room's conversation. The storm that hit Vermont that has devastated us beyond or in the capacity of even the 1927 flood. I am just eternally grateful that our community here in Vergennes and within my district did not suffer the imminent damages that was, that other communities just have been devastated with the impact of Irene. But I probably won't go into a lot of the stats, but there, you know, there's been a lot of good news to come out of Irene and a lot of bad news. And some of the good news that I'd like to emphasize is that Vermont's response in general to what has happened has now set basically in FEMA, has now given us some credit to creating a new standard for them. It's maybe not a legal standard, but a standard nonetheless in DC called the Vermont Standard in what they consider a response to a disaster. Since Representative Clark and I and the rest of the legislature has left Montpelier last May, we now have six disaster codes on the books since our departure. Four of them from FEMA and two of them with Federal Highway Emergency Aid. So how those work, what money or and how that's going to be matched will be a lot of what we'll be having a conversation in transportation. I was probably very concerned in October as to where the bigger direction is on money and looking at a lot of the data coming in, but have about a week before Thanksgiving in DC, they voted, which you probably know, to fund FEMA, to fund the or accept the waiver to increase the cap from 100 million to up and beyond and to increase, which is very important for us, to extend the 180-day contract period. We would not be able to get the work done within that and a lot of that details, but all of that was very good news that came out of DC. The state level was impacted probably most dramatically like in Waterbury, the Vermont State House, our roads and bridges, but it is at the town level and the towns across Vermont that were impacted far more than I believe than the state. The state had 531 roads, road segments impacted where at the town level there was 2,600. The state had 34 bridges in a state of flux where at the town level almost 1,000 culverts impacted. They are going to need to be, we are in good shape. Our governor and all of the state employees across the state really deserve a huge round of applause for the effort that they've put in, put into the response, particularly with within V-Trans. I can say that we had not only Vermont, but we had the National Guard. We had the National Guard of at least half a dozen other states here that brought their troops and their equipment. Maine and Point brought three teams of underwater bridge inspectors and the list goes on. Three other states DOTs along with 1,800 private contractors that were involved. And our governor put out a gauntlet that said we will be open at X amount of times, what we didn't think we would be able to do. And but I think the best thing he did was to get out of everybody's way then and let them go to work. And for 10 weeks, many people within V-Trans, there were 700 employees that were redirected in response to Irene, which is 80% of the staff of V-Trans. So you can imagine coming into work one day that you've been behind a desk for most of your tenure as a state employee and guess what Ziggy, you're, you won't be doing this today. You're going to Rutland and you're going to count pebbles for the next 10 weeks. Pack your bags. You'll be away from your family and home and doing this emergency duty and they pulled it off just amazingly. So that's the positive, positive piece. At the town level, the state is going to need to respond, to continue to respond to help and Mel talked to this more than anybody, with our town highway aid, class two paving and any funding that comes from the state source, we have accelerated that process and everything that we can get out the door, we have okayed as much as possible. Other areas of assistance have been with the FEMA application grants. There's 3,000 town applications out there for FEMA response. Many towns don't have the level of support from engineering that every regional planning commission may have and so the state has stepped in to help them whenever possible with that process and go with them to meet with FEMA in this, in, as they work up their worksheets because as we go down the road, FEMA will be auditing this for many, many years to come. And so we want to make sure that we have put Vermont on its best footing to receive those funds. Coming out of this, a few lessons to learn at the town levels, which I can say that our communities in Addison County, road crews, the foremen of every road crew in Addison County meets at a regular basis. And I often go when I'm invited and enjoy their spirited conversation and send me, send me around the corner many times. And but I want you to know that in Montpelier during testimony, when I went over for the water mitigation piece, it was, I was actually in the back of the room or to the side when I heard the testimony given that gave particularly Addison County road crew credit for being, basically having their act together better than any other county in the state. And this I mean is like in having mutual aid agreements between towns. This will come into play when we're, when, when a town needs to use mutual aid for an application for federal, for the FEMA match and things like that. So having our houses in order, later on you'll hear us talking about making sure that people have their mutual aid agreements in place. Flood insurance, there were 31 communities in the state that did not participate at the federal, federal flood insurance level, which means any resident living in that town is not eligible and cannot purchase if the, if the select board of the community does not participate in that. So regardless of whether or not a resident wanted to be a part of it, there are 31 towns that had not been a part of that plan. We're continuing to work with them and with the flood insurance. They have until March 31st to actually be able to retro apply and get through that process. So I know that I don't believe that that's here. You're going to hear us talk about culvert sizes coming up, particularly between transportation and fish and wildlife. One of the interesting backstories that came out of this, and I know there's a lot of people here today and you give me my two, three, one. Is that V-Trans and A&amp;R, which is the Agency of Natural Resources, when Waterbury was washed out that fateful day, in relocating the employees, A&amp;R was located on the floor above V-Trans in Montpelier. And it has created some interesting working dynamics now with those two agencies that didn't naturally exist before. This was not by design, but from that has come some interesting working partnerships. So, so we're looking at that as a continuing and ongoing way to capture. Culvert sizes, we have three different sizes in the state and let me just put it this way and I'll be concise is that we're going to need to be looking at that, what is in best interest of Vermont. Housing, had 1,400 houses in Vermont that had been impacted and thank goodness, we don't have any here, but it will impact us financially. You know, we may not be dealing with the flood and the debris directly, but, but Vergennes and our district will be dealing with some of the financial impacts of this going forward. Earlier in the spring, you were aware of the flooding that occurred. Ferrisburg, Hampton, Addison were particularly impacted by the spring flooding. Abatement boards met to hear cases from residents around having their, their taxes abated. And I was in communication with the tax department about that because we had discussions about whether or not it was acceptable to abate their education portion of the tax. That was not okayed at that time. So when we've gotten into the Irene cycle, Ways and Means has met and probably for the first time in the history of Vermont, has actually passed a bill out of their committee in an off-season. And this was done in a way to show that we had, that they had strong intent. We'll need to come to the House floor and of course go through the Senate process, but it was to demonstrate that we were serious at accepting the fact that the, the abatement portion for towns would be spread statewide. All right? And not just on particular communities. The education portion was granted to, for a town to be able to abate the education portion, which is in an estimate of 2 to 3 million at the state level. At this point, they feel education and maybe some other sources, but we'll get into that conversation when we're in Montpelier. And I'm sure Representative Clark may have a lot to say about that. And, but I did have a conversation and wanted to make sure that the timeframe of this did not exclude the spring flooding and these other incidences. And so the bill does include Ferrisburg's time and the others that were impacted by the spring flooding. So I'll have to continue to keep an eye on that to make sure that that gets all the way through for, for that community. As you guys knew, you were elected officials and leaders of this community and it takes an enormous amount of vision and leadership is required to navigate through some difficult times. And although I don't know when we ever are not in difficult times, there's always something. But this session coming up, we're going to be looking at making decisions that will put Vermont on a course that will have impacts probably for the next 50 years. Whether it's in transportation, where are we going to cite the, the state hospital, where are workers going to be, what are going to be those conditions and how are we going to structure that? We've got an opportunity as well as a crisis. That's the other side of this point. And I believe that we should take and work as hard as we can, as committed every day. And I got to tell you, I still get up every day, love going to work, love my job. And, but we'll be engaging in all of those things. And I'm looking at the longer run picture, you know, there's, there's also a report coming out on education finance reform. That report is going to be very interesting. There's also the tax exemption piece that's going to be interesting that's beyond Irene. We've got, healthcare is now out of basically the legislative piece. It is now a lot of work with the Green Mountain Care Board. And I hope that you've taken an opportunity to participate in the conversations and some of the forums that are going on right now around how we would like to structure or how the Green Mountain Care is going to end up promoting a, a financial structure and, and on what basic packages. All right? I won't go into that, but there's a lot around that as well. Public transit, near and dear to my heart as well, and I am your representative on the ACTOR board and I should come here more often. So I apologize for not giving you more updates on that. But earlier I was, I was just saying to, to Lowell that, you know, we have a great working partner. ACTOR and Goodrich got together, you know, met and participated in a, in the Way to Go program in the spring where they signed up, were community people. They sign up online to participate in a one-week challenge on changing the way you commute to work, whether you bike, you ride, you take the bus. And lo and behold, did you know that Vergennes came in second in the state? We were only beat out by Burlington's, so Mayor Kiss at the time and myself accepted the two awards. And I did make note to him that the smallest city came in second to the largest city and that he should watch out for next year. So.
That must be what scared him away from.
I don't know if I can take credit for that. So I brought the certificate here and I'd like to present this to you, Mayor, and I'll stay out of the wires. There you go. And I believe Goodrich has probably already gotten their plaque and if not, we'll make sure that that's there. I also want you to know that ACTOR has been recognized in a national publication that is sponsored by the Federal Transit Administration for innovative rural transit services. Okay? This is a report that's very, very large and I only printed off the section of ACTOR. But lo and behold, on the cover of this report, this national report, if you want to pass this around, you will see, take a look at that cover. It is our area, the ACTOR bus with the words Vergennes written. I don't know if anybody else will notice that it's Vergennes other than me, but they have received some nice accolades as far as innovative ranking. I can report back that on the, the 40% increase back in March, you were aware that we increased the ridership and where those numbers are right now has just skyrocketed right off the chart. We, in February or FY10, there was a 40% increase, which was even with, exactly with the mark. And then again, on top of that, another 33% increase in 11. So to date, there has been a total of an 80% increase in ridership on the tri-town bus with a 40% increase in, in expanded services. That is just enormous. Other opportunities for them, I've got their input here on the energy plan, but public transit will play a significant role in there. And I'll just say that transportation is the number one cause for our Vermont's emissions problem. And so we are going to need to take a hard look at that in, within the, the energy plan that's coming up. And let's see, local, our beloved railroad station. It is still on schedule. It's still on the books. I know that Mel tests his patients every day, or maybe now it's maybe once a month or every two months. Don't you give it any thought. But where we ended off last year, in last year's budget, there is an additional, additional $700,000 now on the transportation books to have, after, after it's moved, to have it renovated. That is now in the book in law. The only way that money comes out or it gets changed is by legislative approval. And I don't seem to be doing that. It may not get done anytime soon that I can see, but.
I checked yesterday and it's still on track to go out to bid by the end of the year.
Every time I think about it and we get this close, something happens and it gets moved. So, so I'm wondering at times, are we missing something? Is there something not in this plan that every time we get that close, it gets knocked out? I've also been accepted to and have been attending the UVM Snelling Center for Government, the 2012 Leadership Institute for a year. So I'll try to increase my capacity to be a better legislator and leader for the community. And then I'll end with saying I have enjoyed or working with the police chief after visiting with him on, on what he saw as, as a problem in Vergennes. Have made myself available to him for whatever he needs. Post the meeting, which was so well-attended and wonderful turnout. It's a tribute to Vergennes and its community spirit. And our chief's initiative to take on that, that question, that's a very sensitive question. I also attended a post-meeting with all of the police chiefs in Addison County with the state's attorney's office and, and the state police on December 7th and made my recommendations or at least my recommendations to the chief and others as to where to go on January 11th and working in several other people that work in the field. And again, I'll just close by saying thank you. And if I left any time for questions.
Did we have any questions?
I just wanted to thank you Diane for your hard work and leadership in getting the bridge open on time and, and in a fairly reasonable budget. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. The bridge is beautiful. It was over budget, but as you know, we weigh between going over another winter of paying for the ferry and the impacts. It may be over, but it could have been a lot, a lot worse. And that bridge out there is a tribute to a really a lot of innovation. There's 48 stakeholders in, in that process. It's just unheard of, unheard of to have it done in that amount of time. And there has not been a time that I have not been out there now, that the difference is now that there's pedestrian and bike. And that every time we've been out walking the dog, it's half a mile over. So if you go over and back, it's a one-mile loop and people just walk in. There is nothing less than 20 people walking on the bridge all the time. And it's, so it's going to open up something new. And you'll see in the spring, there's a bid for the Vermont side and the New York side that for the restoration. It's open, but it's not done. There's site work that has to be finished, but that will begin in the spring and I'll stop on that. But I'll, I've got the ribbon. When I cut the ribbon, everybody went and I just, I kept cutting. I saved everything. I took the scissors. Anyway, but thank you.
Ziggy, did you have a question?
Well, I don't know if you know the answers to this. In the last couple of years, when I've been out of closing, the banks make the people take flood insurance. So how did that affect the people who had taken the flood insurance on those, on those different towns that, you know, they didn't get involved? Did they still get flood insurance or that canceled?
From what I understand, and I can't speak from any kind of authority, if the community is not participating, they're not so, either they didn't or they're, they're not in a flood zone, but now they, but the max now are changed. Just a little. So I don't, I don't know the answer to that, but I would, I would assume that if they were holding to the form, they, they wouldn't be able to. There's a couple of other things coming up Ziggy that later on we could talk about. And this is private roads over railroads crossings is an issue with resale. I've, because I'm transportation, I've met with people in South Burlington particularly, that this has really been a game changer for them. And we're going to need to figure out how to address that. And I've now, we've got only two that I know of in Ferrisburg. And so the people living on that road, so, so there's some work that has going to need to happen that as long and also with private roads issues with resale.
Any other questions of Diane? If not, thank you very much Diane for your information.
And when, when we're done, I hope that you don't find this as any way that I promised to go home and to continue my Santa Claus helping duties.
No problem. Not a problem. We'll turn it over to Santa Claus himself. Greg.
Yeah, I'll be right along Diane. Mayor Dale's in City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Merry Christmas to all of you and me. We all have the cross person of the year. I'm concerned about two or three things that I think will affect us in Vergennes. One of them is the value of grand lists is changing dramatically and I think it's probably across the state falling pretty heavily. And exactly how we deal with that in Montpelier and locally, I think is going to be very important. I'm concerned also about the tenor that I've seen already long before we got back to Montpelier. We're seeing newspaper reports about we got to raise property taxes on two cents. Maybe we can keep it the same or maybe one, maybe we can do this. It concerns me that that is a lead-in for we're going to raise property taxes in order to make sure that the Ed Fund is secure. Now within certain boundaries, that may have to be done because by law there has to be a, a certain amount, but I'm concerned about it because I think in the economic times that we're in, people are struggling to pay their property taxes. Not only for local government, but I think for education too. And the higher they are, the harder it is to pay. So having said that, my concern continues to be that as a legislature, we don't talk about the possibilities in education. We don't talk about ways to try to make things better or change the education outlook for people. We do the, the same type of thing. It always comes down to a matter of are we going to keep the taxes the same or raise them? And I think that this is a perfect opportunity, perfect, because of the economics of the state, this is a perfect opportunity for us to talk about what's really important to the state of Vermont and to you. Now I happen to believe that probably the number one thing is education. So don't short it, but let's talk about ways that might make it better. Lastly, Michael, I think it's important for all of us, I'm sorry, Mayor Dale's. I think it's important for us to consider, thinking about more this year because of Irene and because of the economic situation, how we deal with each other is going to be very important. Your presence is certainly there somewhat in Montpelier with Diane and myself and the two senators, but I think it's very important this year that we keep in closer touch because I think this year especially, people are going to be, could be very adversely affected by the economic situation, maybe even by the political situation. I think it's important that we just keep an open door there so that we know what's going on and what it is that, that we can do to help. So I think I'll pretty much leave it at that. That's a good place to start, I think.
If at any point in time you need to come back at any council meeting, give us a little bit of heads up and we'll work you in. But definitely you will have an invite to the annual meeting in March and we'll talk to you in advance to see what your time slot will look like. So we try to work it in into the agenda. We'll, we'll fold you in so you can get in and get onto your other meetings that you must attend.
Yeah, because we'll be preparing to, to leave and we pretty, we live over there Monday through Friday and, you know, only when we really need to, when we, you know, come back and forth. But remember that Mondays, we're traditionally here, but we also start the Legislative Breakfast Series, which is every Monday morning somewhere in Addison County with every legislator, House and Senate. And we have a fabulous turnout that we have your usual 35 that always show up. Right Representative Clark? We come every day with their, or every Monday with their notebook. And of course, everyone is welcome to attend and it's basically an open mic. So you get all of us. And not only is it good information, but we also get to hear from each other too. So we spend pretty much every Monday together.
Well, with today's technologies, I'm sure that if you needed to be here in voice, we could arrange that. So Joe, you had something?
Yeah, just first of all, Representative Clark, I just want to say how happy I am to see you here and ready to go back to Montpelier after the issues you had last year. But I also have a question. I'm just curious, would you see any movement this year or what the future is for school district consolidation?
I think there may be a shot this year, Joe, at consolidating superintendencies before schools. It seems as though everybody's kind of turning down the school consolidation generally. So I think there's a big push on, at least from what I've heard, of not closing schools, but consolidating superintendents. So we'll see. I don't know where it'll go, but there have been bills on the wall for several years.
Any other questions of Greg or Diane? If not, again, I want to thank you very much for taking time out of your very busy schedules to come share that information with us tonight. And you knew me as Michael before you did Mayor, so anytime, either way, I'm good with it. No, no, I'm, I'm good with it.
Of course, that's because I knew you long before you were mayor.
We'll make our, our exit and.
Okay, thanks again.
I'll, I'll make a recommendation book that I've been reading that I absolutely adore. I'll make a recommendation book that I've been reading that I absolutely adore. It's called Fast Lane on a Dirt Road. It's a contemporary history of Vermont, particularly around transportation and roads, and I'm finding it absolutely delightful and how all the issues are the same to one another later. Good night.
Good night. We'll let you sneak by Greg before we, well, maybe we won't let him sneak by. We'll keep the ball rolling. Now we'll turn the meeting over to Allison Rimmer, President of the Friends of the Vrejens Opera House.
Thank you, that's me. So there's my introduction. I'm Allison Rimmer, City President and President of the Friends of the Vrejens Opera House. For, on behalf of the Opera House, I'm making a proposal to the City Council that the city allocate funds to support ongoing operations at the Opera House. We see this much like the support the city offers the Bixby Library. We are a civic and cultural center for the city and surrounding towns housed in an historic city building. The city supports recreational activities and facilities such as the pool and the skateboard park. And we feel that supporting the Opera House would be an appropriate use of city, of civic funds. Since opening in ninety-seven, the Opera House has been a cornerstone for the economic revitalization of Vrejens. Visitors to the Opera House shop and dine in the city, bringing business to our downtown merchants. The Opera House provides programming for the enjoyment of residents and visitors, and we make the space available for rentals of all types. It has been our policy to use a sliding rental scale, charging as much as seventy percent less to local nonprofits to use the space than we charge for private functions. We've subsidized many of the community functions taking place in the building over the years. Like many nonprofits, the Opera House has had a very hard time with donations and event sponsorship since the economic downturn of two thousand and eight. But we've been determined to keep our doors open, our rates affordable and competitive with other rental spaces, and to provide excellent community and patron support. The number of our individual members, events, and patron visits has stayed relatively stable, but the amount of individual contributions has dropped with the change in the economy. And our business sponsorship has dropped as well. Adding to the difficulty in seeking donations and grants for our usual operating budget has been the ongoing process of installing a fire suppression system. The building opened without a sprinkler system, but about three years ago, the fire marshal came and told us it was time to install one. And as you can imagine, it's not a straightforward project retrofitting an historic building. We found that the sprinkler project has absorbed an enormous amount of time and energy from our previous Executive Director, Jackson Evans, our current Executive Director, Ali Corcoran, she's right back there, and the Board of Directors. Most of the time and energy that we would normally be able to put towards strategic planning, fundraising, and grant seeking for other projects and facilities upkeep has been taken up with this free food project. In response to these challenges, the board has taken steps to change our programming, our advertising, and our outreach to the community. Like all small businesses nowadays, we're trying to be smarter, more targeted advertising, funding projects that provide more benefits to our business members and bring in a wider audience. Our annual budget is just under a hundred thousand dollars, about ten percent of which is basic operating costs, the things you do to keep a building open. Heat, electricity, air conditioning, cleaning, stocking the bathrooms. We've been unable to keep up with or even start many basic maintenance and improvement projects. We aren't able to make investments in equipment that would make us a more competitive and attractive rental hall. We aren't able to do the maintenance that makes a building function better and ensures long-term health of the building. So we're requesting fifteen thousand dollars from city funds. Such funds could come from several sources of city revenue if the council deems appropriate. We would earmark ten thousand dollars towards basic operating costs and start catching up on deferred maintenance with the other five. Of course, if the city has other suggestions as to the designated use of those funds, we're happy to discuss it as well. We will be approaching our neighboring towns requesting funds, much as they contribute to the Bixby, Addison, Walton, Phantom. That's pretty much it. We thank you for your time. We look forward to discussing this further, exploring new ways for the city and the Opera House to partner to our mutual benefit and to the benefit and continued economic health and vitality of our town. We'll have to take any questions.
Is this a fifteen thousand dollars a one-time request? Most of the other, the other, the pool, the library, so forth are ongoing?
We would look at it to be ongoing.
Fifteen thousand dollars per year on?
Can you speak to the sprinkler system? You already kind of said it, but I'm here.
Yeah, the sprinkler system, you can watch people start breaking out just for the sprinkler system. It's been a project. Certainly Ali can talk more about it as well as can Jeff Nelson, who's also on the board. But you should have a fire suppression system in a public building, and I don't know the ins and outs of how the building was able to open as a public space without it, but it was. Fire marshal came, said you need sprinkler. Okay, great. And becomes, you know, a long process of getting bids, and then getting bids and getting bids. And how's it going to tie into the city? And is the city gonna do it too? And how much space is the city and how much is the Opera House? Okay, and how can we get grants? And how can we get tax credits so that a lot of it is paid for out of grants and fundraising and tax credits and stuff? And so we had a lot of that done. As a project, it's taken more time, and part of it is just, well, you've got Alpine, and they're starting here, but then they're starting the old lantern, you know, things keep time and time. Well, is that tax credit still going to be available? Can, you know, reroll that over again from the bank? Any small cash reserves we have, we've had to keep them liquid rather than moving into something that might be a little bit more interest based in trade because we have to pay things out. So we're getting there. We're ninety percent there, and then all of a sudden, we find out, oh, we think you need a fire pump to increase pressure from the city line up to your third floor, up to the attic. Well, how much is that gonna cost? Well, that could cost A, B, C, and a whole bunch of D. And plus, you need power to get from here to there. And so again, none of the on the board was hired for their engineering abilities, for their sprinkler installation ability. So that has been part of the problem is, especially with the change in Executive Director, was started this piece, start the next piece, what's the next piece? And just trying to keep it going. So you see, it just becomes a time suck trying to make the follow-up call. What is the next step? Well, I can't tell you about the fire pump, and also know there's enough electrical. I can't get the electrical guy here unless I can meet the Green Mountain guy there. So we need to get it there. We want to get it there in order to have, is it drinking and dancing or music and dancing? If you want an event that is other than you sitting at the tables having a nice time, you have to have the fire suppression system. We have been working under a variance where if we have folks on fire watch, such as our fire guys, can literally just be there. They're sober, they're not taking any part of the party, and they can be there to manage the space. And that is a way you can work around not having the fire suppression system, but that, they'll only do that for so long, right? There's only so long that they'll say that's okay. So the concern is, here we are happily booking weddings and such for weddings the next two years. And will there come a point where the fire marshal says, you haven't gotten this done. It's been two years. Sorry. And then do we have to call our brides and say, sorry? So it's just been, it's been a millstone. You can't make one step forward without two steps back. And like I said, nobody on the board was, is an engineer, so it's, that's been a difficult.
But what's left to do with that project? And was, is it just a pump?
I believe it's just a pump at this time. And part of that is getting power from across the street. You got the power at the building?
No, it's, no. The fire pump requires a three-phase power source for itself. We have three-phase power at the back of the building, but we can't take it to the front of the building where the fire pump has to sit. So it's actually has to come from across the street, so it's a new three-phase power line. And then it's gonna go from the one corner of the building all the way under in the crawl space to the other corner of the building where the fire pump is.
And some things I've been trying to do, and just to break the burden of this, is funding, as it were, a subcontract to take it away from Ali's hands, whose job is, you know, strategic planning and donor cultivation and programming. It's not to sort through pages of three-phase electrical needs, see if there's somebody else who can just take on and run with it for us. And I'm repeating several layers of conversations here, so if I've got it not correct, please excuse me. The fire marshal was in the other day and said, do you really need a fire pump? Well, if we don't, if there's some other engineering approach that we don't know about. So that is still all an investigation, and our goal is very much is to get the answers, the dollar cost, early in the year, so we know where we go. So if we need to raise sixty thousand dollars, where are we going to go to get that? And get it done. Cross it off the list and have a big party when we're done. With drinking and dancing.
Mel, you wanna add something?
Well, one thing, I'm not sure if the question was answered, Peter, but basically there was, and I don't, I'm not at a certain time, I'm a code specialist, but there was a change in code that occurred after, you know, some bar fires in Rhode Island in, whether or not it was October one, two thousand and eight, or October one, two thousand and nine. But there was a code change that went into effect that any, any public building holding so-called nightclub events, i.e. drinking, dances, dancing, dim lights, music. You know, you cannot have, you cannot, you're not allowed to have occupancy of over ninety-nine people. And so obviously, you know, you know, the occupancy capacity of the Opera House is three hundred people or whatever, which is, which is based on a whole mess of other formulas, ingress and egress and these types of things. So the, the real capacity of people is, is a large number, three hundred. And I think a lot of, you know, you know, the revenue stream, if you will, for the Opera House, you know, when all of a sudden, they used to be able to have two hundred people events, you know, because of the change in code, you know, you're, you're down to only having ninety-nine, and so obviously, the economics of an event changed tremendously, all right? So, you know, sure, one of the options was don't do a sprinkler, you know, don't do a sprinkler system. But of course, now you're faced with, you know, limiting any weddings that occurred up there would have limits of ninety-nine. Yeah, right. So, so that's why, you know, the Opera House, you know, made a conscious decision to move forward and sprinkler the building. And when they made that decision, obviously, the city was approached about, about, you know, would the city, would be in, would the city be interested, no pun intended, tapping into this project? And the city agreed to, to be in essence, an add-on to the project. And that add-on, our add-on cost, you know, has never been absolutely determined, but it's somewhere in the vicinity of twenty to twenty-seven thousand dollars. And that was the original, our original estimated cost. And as Allison said, it really does surprise me that I, there's nothing worse than surprises in a project. You know, you, you go through, and this whole fire pump thing really was a surprise, and you'd think that that's something that should never be a surprise. You know, I mean, you know, last I knew, PSI is point four-two pounds per lineal foot. And if you, you know, we're not talking high-level math here to find out how much PSI is required to come out of a sprinkler system, you know, fifty-seven feet above the water line. And, but it did end up becoming a, becoming a surprise. And Allison said, you know, it's not just the twenty thousand dollar pump, you know, it's, you know, ten thousand dollars in getting electricity there. So, you know, it's, it is, you know, extremely frustrating project for, you know, for them. You know, there's, there's just nothing worse. And, you know, I can tell you the clock is ticking here for them because, you know, you can't just live by this waiver forever. You know, 'cause at some point, they're gonna say, you know, we don't care if you have the whole fire department down there, you can't have more than ninety-nine people.
Even if you were to say, fine, we'll do, you know, a world of ninety-nine people. I also don't know if that's the best way to protect the investment that the citizens of Vrejens have already made in that building and what is a historic city building. So fine, you say, great, we only have seventy-five people here, no fire suppression system. Doesn't mean that it's not a lightning strike or a squirrel chewing through a wire, or just, you know, how breakers get hot and a fire could start anyhow. So even if you weren't having any worries, it's something to think about, that the city making the investment, making sure that that building is protected from any of the many causes of fires besides drunken brides knocking over their candles. So there's that, yeah.
So I would presume again that, that your, your question about this being an ongoing sort of thing, that becomes a budget item that goes in as opposed to something that's presented to the voters on one-time sort of thing?
Yeah. You know, one of the things, kind of, you know, obviously, I didn't work here for ten, ten years, so I don't, don't know exactly what was going on during that period. But, you know, relative to the, the restoration of the Opera House, there was, there was really a number of projects that, that the city partnered with the Opera House. And, and, you know, for instance, and I, and I don't, I don't know exactly what the deal is, but, you know, the city did contribute to items that were of shared interest, i.e. the roof. You know, even though the roof isn't directly above our heads, it's, it's above our heads, right? Relative to the trust system, all right? You know, that's really a part of our structure. I think we participated in that. You know, there was some other, there was some other projects, you know, that, that the city and the Opera House partnered with throughout the years. Relative to budget support, you know, yes, it's true that this, that, to my knowledge, there's never been any actual budget support. And I, and I think it was hoped that there never would need to be budget support. It was hoped that, you know, there would be enough fundraising and, and there'd be enough events held throughout the year that the ticket prices would be such that they could pay the staff, and it really did not need, you know, a government subsidy. And, you know, I think that, you know, I think if that's the thing that I'm hearing, you know, is, and I think it's tough for you to stand here just to, just to say this, that, because when this, when there was, when this project was originally presented to the City Council, they're saying, you know, the city, they asked the City Council for their permission, basically, for their permission to move forward with this project, you know, on the assumption that it actually would be self-sufficient. And, and it has been self-sufficient for years and years. And now, it's appearing that, you know, I don't wanna say that it's impossible for it to be self-sufficient, but certainly, what I'm hearing in, is in the foreseeable future, that it's not, it is not self-sufficient.
You're just sort of doing like moving back to your parents' bedroom, your bedroom back as a kid, and you know, it's like, we were fine, nice years. And I could understand, I wasn't here at the time, but I could understand when the, this project was first proposed at the City Council at the time, I don't know about this Opera House, is it gonna do any good? I, I don't, you know, go ahead, have a good time, see if it works. And it did work really wonderfully. We can see some of the economic stats in those handouts I handed out to you. And unfortunately, yeah, it's, we, we gotta say it, the finance, the private sector isn't making it possible anymore. I think none of us anticipated that two thousand and eight would last till two thousand and eleven. You know, we were making steps, we were making changes, we were assuming things would pick up, and here, as we know, we all are four years later, still going. So, yeah, we had, it's a big change. That's why we called us one of our founding members to say, we want you to know, we're making this change. And we don't want you to read about it in the Indy, so that you know that we need to make these changes and how we can support ourselves. I'm sure you don't want to take any more time, it's now got other things on the agenda, but I'd be glad to.
Wonder if anyone outside had any questions? We're not gonna act on anything tonight.
Correct.
It's, it's something that Mel and I have to talk about, whether we establish a separate committee to look in and do some investigations, talk about some whatever options we might come up with, or recommendations, counteroffers, or whatever, so.
Yes, I'd be more than happy to sit down with budget numbers and our sheets and option A and option B and what we're looking for.
And at some point, I, I know that you got a pretty good shopping list here. I'd be interested in knowing what has completed because some of these items, I believe, are, are completed.
Yeah.
So I'd like to see a done list, or what is done and what is yet to be done.
And what's a priority.
And what could be put off.
Yeah, exactly.
What are priorities?
Absolutely.
Yep. Wanna thank everybody for coming.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate you taking your time out of your very busy schedule. Okay. Our next visitor was gonna be visitors, but one of them has, has a medical issue that she has to deal with. So Alex will not be here tonight, but we'll turn the meeting over to Cheryl.
Yes, Alex is very busy right now. She did send you both an email.
Got it, right?
Yeah. Essentially, Alex and I got together and put together a couple of articles that we understand could, could be approved at the, at the select board, or it could be, you know, petitioned with five percent of the voters. So it could be a petitioned article, or it could be an article that could be approved by the, the City Council. So we thought we would give you the, the two articles that we put together. We, we got together a few months ago after the last revote happened for unification. Part of this was just this feeling that there's far too many revotes. So the, the first article, which is the re, addressing the revote, Alex and I thought that, well, and there's a lot of other people that probably think this too, that there are a lot of revotes. And as we looked into the statutes, there's, there's a law that provides that you can have these revotes. All that's required is five percent of the voters. Um, all that's required is five percent of the voters. It also allows for you to increase the percentage of required signatures for a revote up to twenty percent. Um, the thought behind requesting it go to twenty percent is to perhaps, um, make it a, a little bit more of a difficult process and, and make sure it's an important, um, reason for a revote. I, I, we doubt very much if the law was put into place so that a handful of people would disagree with something that was voted on democratically. And, uh, that's why it was, um, contested. It probably wasn't, uh, designed for that reason. It was probably put in place so if there was a, a process error or some legal issue or some major problem with the vote, that you have a way to, to revote that, that article. Um, as Alex put it, I should give her, uh, her words because she put it quite, quite, um, nicely.
Do you want me to hold up for you?
Well, it's the, the whole classes thing, you know? It, it, um, that once a democratically-held vote has taken place, um, the results should be upheld barring evidence of election fraud. Um, the revotes really don't bring in the same number of voters. Um, it's not the same makeup as the, of the initial vote. And so, it tends to not really be representative of the intentions of the community, perhaps. If we increase the, the number of signatures required to twenty percent, it doesn't preclude that revote from happening, but it really would put it into, it, it would need to be a more important issue instead of a handful of folks. It would need to be, a lot of people think that something went wrong here and we should, we should look at that issue again. So, that's, that's essentially it. Um, I think the article that we wrote was pretty straightforward and clear. The law allows you to do that, so it's up to the, the voters if we want to increase that number of required signatures to twenty percent. And, um, it was a suggestion that perhaps we come before the voters tonight. So, we have a chance, if you approve the, the article, um, we don't have to go in and get those, uh, signatures from, from voters and, and do it that way. So, that's pretty much it.
Mike, I just wanna talk about the conflict of interest portion first. Uh, and Cheryl and I had multiple.
Oh, I hadn't even started on that yet.
I'm sorry, well, okay, never mind, I'll wait there.
No, 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 that's okay.
Okay, so, we'll, we'll hold off.
The revote is just so straightforward now that I thought that I would just throw that out there and then it was not as straightforward.
Let's, let's go for questions of Cheryl, uh, if anybody has them on, on the first item that she brought up, about the twenty percent increase. Does anybody here at the table have any? Ziggy?
I think that this is, is gonna affect the democratic process, and I really think that this is censorship. I think that if there's something that is wrong when a vote has been put up and there's been misrepresentation and things that have led to people to believe that it was proven that it wasn't, that people have a right to come back and revote. And I don't think it has to be how many people. I mean, the last time we had, there was more people at the revote than there were at the regular meeting. If there's documentation to prove what is going on, then the people should have the right. And five percent, you know, is like, I don't know what it is for Virgin, is eighty-five, ninety people?
Seventy-five, yes.
Seventy-five. So, when you're talking twenty percent, you're talking, you're gonna have at least three hundred people. You gotta get, to get three hundred people involved. I think that is, that is not the process. I mean, I remember be living in Virgin when I was a kid and once in a while, a vote was brought around for something, a petition. I mean, this has been going on for over fifty, sixty years and now all of a sudden, we have to stop this? And we have to go to a twenty percent? Now, when we go back, and I will bring this up, in two thousand and five, when this, the consolidation of the school was brought in front of all the towns, it was turned down. It was brought back up in July, it was turned down. Then in three thousand and ten, it was brought up and it was voted yes. So, already, and then we had the revote in Addison, but we did vote it no. So, after four, there was three noes and one yes. Two thousand and eleven, she, they came in front of us, there was no problems. We didn't give them a hard time, they got on the ballot, yes. But what happened after that? And the stuff that was put in the paper before and after and what went on after that? I'm sorry, people had a right to know. There was no agenda. They had a right to know exactly what was going on. And I'm sorry, that's the way it is, I feel.
Ziggy, what does that have to do with whether this should be presented? This, this, um, potential change should be presented to the voters?
What do you mean?
Because all, all this is asking is that the voters be allowed to have an opportunity to change the percentage. That's, and you're, you're objecting to that?
Three hundred people, you gotta get out and get signatures for three hundred people. I'm not objecting to that, but I'm objecting to the twenty percent.
Okay, but.
And I mean.
So, you're, so you're not objecting to this going on the, on the town ballot?
Yes, I am. I want, well, the petition belongs to the petition.
I'm missing something when you're saying, sorry, I.
If she wants to put it on, or anybody wants to go on the ballot, you know, that's fine. But this twenty percent, we gotta, we gotta get people input, we can't just.
Would, would, where's, get this?
Well, the twenty, the, a twenty percent requirement would ensure the group, revotes are not held unless a much higher percentage of voters believe an original vote result was flawed, which seems far more democratic. Five percent, which is the current standard, it, the revotes, uh, one of the, one of the things about revotes is it, it has a very negative connotation. There's a lot of people that go, oh, revotes. And it kind of, it waters down the impact of your initial, initial vote. You know, it's like, oh, my vote doesn't count anyway, it's just gonna be revoked. It kind of waters down the whole process. It takes away from that original democratic process. And it doesn't preclude it from happening, but it would just need to involve more people.
I don't think that.
I think Joan was first.
Well, yeah, I, I think, um, you know, I certainly respect your disagreement with the latest revote. However, in my opinion, we have far too many revotes, I think the bar is set too low. I really feel like it's, it's too easy to set up a revote. Uh, it takes a lot of time for the city employees, it takes a lot of money to, uh, establish another vote. If, if, if an issue is important enough to, for a revote, I don't think that, you know, whether it's fifteen percent, ten percent, or twenty percent, or whatever, uh, that, that shouldn't be an impediment to establishing a revote.
Right.
Randy?
I, we have, when we have our elections, most generally, we have just twenty percent of the population comes out to vote. Not, normally, do we have more than, we probably have three hundred and fifty, three hundred and seventy-five. So, it's just a little bit more than twenty percent. If we change this to twenty percent, my problem is, is that it's gonna eliminate, eliminate the ability for some people on an issue where they feel it's very important. Five percent of the people feel it's very important that that should be done. They're gonna be denied their democratic right to have a revote if we increase this to twenty percent. Now, are we saying that there, those five percent have less, are less valued? Their opinions are less valued?
It, it is very easy right now to get seventy-five signatures on, on a piece of paper. Those twenty percent that sign the paper probably don't go vote. But if they think it's important enough that a revote is, you know, that, that just means that a larger percentage of the town would be involved in that decision-making process and not just a handful of people that just get, you know, go and have everybody sign a piece of paper.
Aren't those, aren't those handful important too?
Of course, they're important. They have an opportunity in the first election to vote. The, the revote petitions are often in public places where people go buy a coffee or a Coke. They don't have to get up and go to the polling place to sign a petition. So, I think that that, I'm not sure that that is comparing apples to apples.
It is.
It is.
Peter?
I, I think, I think you're all missing the basic point of what's being asked here. What is being asked is, do the voters of this city want to change from five to twenty? We are not being asked to make any decision by changing from five to twenty. We're just being asked to let the voters decide whether they want to change the number of votes required for reconsideration. Those are two very distinctly different things. You have your own opinion about the content and, and, and that. But, but here, the question is not, do we want to go from five to twenty? The question is, do we want to allow the voters to make that decision?
I believe that you did ask us to make the decision.
Yes, well, yeah, is that right?
One at a time, and let's stay in control. I will tell people when to talk, so be recognized first. Thank you, Cheryl?
The, the, um, it can go either way, Joe. I was asking Mel about the process. And, um, we either, you either get petition and, and bring it forth. When would that happen? Just like a regular petition.
Forty days before the annual meeting.
You would, you would submit it forty days before town meeting day with, with signatures to say, please put this on the ballot. The other way of going about it is to present it to the city council to ask if you would approve this to go on the ballot, which would preclude the gathering of signatures. So, the, the question is, would you go ahead and approve this ahead of time? Or should we go ahead and get five percent of the, is it five percent?
Yes.
Of the voter's signature for that, for that to be requested to go on the, on the ballot? So, this is a request to do it ahead of time? And if not, then we would go and get petitions done.
No, I'll recognize myself, I have a question. Would you accept less than something than, less than twenty percent?
If you have another option based on something?
They range from five to twenty.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
You could do ten, you could do fifteen, I don't know. I mean, is there, is there a, a reason?
No, it's no, not set on twenty, it's just to, to increase that amount.
Is there a compromise that, I, I, I understand what you're saying, it has value, okay? And you gotta remember how many citizens we have here. And I do agree that seventy-five is an extremely low number to get. And that number should be higher, but I'm not sure that three hundred is, is the number we should try to get. So, that's, that's where I'm, my opinion. David?
Um, I, I can think of about a half a dozen times, probably over the last fifteen or twenty years, where, and there had been revotes and the issue with it wasn't necessarily one of fraud or process error or anything else. It was, in, in some instances, misinformation. In other instances, it was incomplete information. And in at least one, it was, it was particularly relative to how the article was specifically warned. It created a great deal of confusion for people voting on it to the point where once that was approved, and this was something different than anything to do with the schools, but that when it was approved and it came out in the media, I had people calling me and saying, I, I, I can't remember specifically whether a no vote ended up meaning yes or yes.
Yeah, yes was a no.
Yes was a no. But, but anyway, so, the, the, the point is, is if there, there can be a, a, a lot of other issues that impact these things other than fraud or a process error. And I, I, I can't think in certainly any time in my lifetime where we've had an allegation of fraud in Virgin. Um, and, and I don't think we've had a process error either. So, I think that that's kind of off the table. But I, I'd go on record as saying, I mean, I'm, I'm opposed to anything that limits the, um, the democratic process and the ability of the minority to petition for redress.
Mike?
No? Yeah, one of the things, I, I haven't done a lot of research on this statute, but it's, you know, because of this gray hair, I, I, I know, I know some things. The, the statute that enabled the municipality to increase the percentage from five to twenty is actually a relatively new statute. It's, uh, it's not, you know, an eighteen, a typical eighteen sixty-nine statute. And I think that the reason, you know, why it probably came up is because there was frivolous, uh, revotes, you know? That, you know, some municipalities trying to pass a bond vote for a, for a new fire station and, and it wins, you know, uh, you know, by an eight to two margin. And, and there's some people that just don't like fire departments. And so, they, uh, they say, I'm not putting up with this, I'm petitioning for a revote. Well, you know, that's, that's pretty frivolous, you know, really. If, if a community has voted, you know, eighty, twenty for, uh, for some public improvement and the twenty percent, uh, just aren't swallowing it, then, uh, then what, it's, it's pretty easy to, to basically tick people off. You know, you go out and get five percent of the, of the, uh, voters and you have another vote and, and you have the vote, and it's still eighty, twenty. And, and basically, it was, you know, it was a waste, alright? Now, you know, having said that, uh, you know, you know, it's tough not to think, it's tough not to think that this has something to do with unification. And, and it's about, you know, whether or not the, the revotes, you know, were frivolous. And, and I'm, I'm pretty sure that, you know, the people that were involved with putting the petition together, it, it wasn't a frivolous revote. The, the vote was, uh, wanting a community to, uh, revisit a issue, which is really, really no different than what the school board did in two thousand and five. You know, the school board held a vote in March of two thousand and five. In the case of Virgin, it went down two thirty-two to two twelve, alright? And the legislative body of the school, you know, which requires no petition, can call for a revote. And that's what they did. And that vote was, you know, as Cheryl talked about earlier, you know, you know, typically, revotes end up low. And that, that vote was two thirteen, and it, it actually went down in flames more than the next time. And then, as Ziggy said, then you had a revote in March of two thousand and ten. And the, and, uh, the revote was certainly less, uh, in numbers. It didn't go down in Virgin, but it didn't meet the two-thirds threshold. But in March, you know, I'm gonna say ironically atypical for a revote to have four hundred and twenty-three votes versus three fifteen. That's, that's just, that is very strange to, uh, to have that. So, you know, Cheryl, I'm glad we talked about what you brought up, Mike, about the, the five, the five versus twenty. And I think that, just so that folks know, you know, Cheryl and I have talked. And, you know, Cheryl, Cheryl called and asked Joan, how many, how many signatures are required to include something on the warning? And the answer is five percent, or seventy-five, or eighty-five. I intercepted the telephone, I said, well, listen, Melissa, let me talk to Cheryl because I wanna make sure that she understands that there's really another, there's another avenue. And the other avenue is that the city council can, can put things, uh, on the, uh, on the article without a petition. So, you know, the, I think the issue tonight, you know, is, is a multiple issue, you know? Do you not take any action at all? And then Cheryl is faced with putting together a petition with five percent and filing that within the forty days, and that's what's on, on the ballot. Uh, the other, uh, is for this city council to commit tonight that they would include something at twenty percent. The other possibility would be for this council to, uh, if there is a majority that agree on something, that might agree at, at seven percent, or eight percent, or ten percent, some other sort of threshold. And if there's a majority of, of this group that is willing to commit to ten, then the ball goes back to Cheryl's court. If she doesn't like ten, then she can go petition, uh, you know, she can go petition for, for the twenty. So, I think, you know, you know, whether, you know, I don't think you have to make a decision tonight. The, the fortieth day is January twenty-fifth of sex or something like that. But, you know, the clock is ticking.
But one of the things that we, when, when I was talking to, to Alex, it wasn't, um, it is not just about unification, it is about the revotes. And one of them was the school board doing it the, the, the first time. You know, so it's, it's just the feeling in our community that, oh my God, it's another revote. Um, and it just, it has a, it takes away from the initial vote. Um, it, it, the democratic process is, is working fine. And then it seems like a handful of people disagreed with it, for good or bad, for whoever would brought, brought it up. And it, it seems like, um, just because of, of a few people disagree with the outcome of the vote, should, should there be a revote? You know, it came from that discussion. It was not, um, about unification, it was the revote process. Um, and that's why Alex and I put our heads together. She's not involved in unification, it's just the revote process.
Maria? I'm going to speak at the court. I just wanted to make a couple of statements. Um, I know of two revotes that we had. One was when we adopted the wolf hybrid ordinance. And it went to the people, shall we outlaw wolf hybrids in the town? The voters all said yes. And Norman Dunham happened to own two wolf hybrids. He had to petition the people and revoke this. And he had UVM come down and gave a big presentation on the wolf breed and everything. Once people got informed on what they were voting for, they over, we had the revote and they overturned the ordinance. So, that ordinance was gone. But he had to get five percent. Now, to, I, I think it hinders people to make them have to get three hundred people to sign that because I, I, I think it's a hardship for them to have to do that when it's a situation, I feel, people go to the polls uninformed and they vote uninformed. And then when they realize after, once someone petitions and then they have public meetings, then they get informed, they're like, oh, I didn't understand that. Another revote we had was the elementary school budget. The year that all passed with flying colors. Parents got their notice, the kids, so there'll be no busing.
Oh, yeah.
Well, believe me, they were on the street like fire, getting that petition going. And they revoked that. Well, believe me, they were on the street like fire, getting that petition going, and they revoked that. Cause once they found out, oh, you're not gonna bus my kid, people are not all informed when they go. And so I think in March, when we have March vote, people go in and say yes, they see me days later, and what was that vote about? They have no idea, but they voted on it just to say, you know, and so.
Sure, yeah. Well, and the wolf hybrid, you know, people aren't gonna know about that, you know.
So they shouldn't say, yes, stop it, when they don't even know what a wolf hybrid is, you know, but they do. And so those are just instances that I think by increasing it to have to get three hundred, when those were good, I think, good decisions with the revote. That the vote turned it around the opposite way, the way it probably should have been. And so I I I look at three hundred, that's hard. I see people do the five percent, and you know, I'm talking my elders, and that's not gonna change them. But I see how some of them, it's a challenge for them to get seventy-five. They are now in the school system where they each grab a petition and go get ten names, and boom, they're done in a day. You know, it's a lot of work for them. So, I I think the twenty percent is too high of a threshold personally, as as a way. Not to mention, I have to validate each one of those when it gets to our desk.
Yeah, I I have a question for you. Do you have, don't, do you have a sense, maybe, I'm sure you don't keep these statistics, but how often revoke petitions don't make the five percent threshold? And how many times do they maybe go over that five percent threshold to maybe ten percent, when when people are actually signing?
Uh, usually the petitioner, the originators, usually on, their only goal is to get to five percent. And so once they're around there, they stop, you know, they might have an extra ten names or something. And I, the only time I know of any petition that went around that fell short was the Virgin's Piedmont Water District bond vote. Because it was miscommunication again, is it five percent or ten percent that you needed? And the deadline arrived, and they all didn't have enough time to go from five percent to ten percent. And that's another area that's gonna cause confusion. Right now, it's just five percent, you know, it's like, well, petition for what? You know, oh, well, that one's a different percent.
Hey.
I don't think a a revote is a big deal, myself, you know? I I actually think on a revote, when people come, they're more informed about what they're voting on than the original vote.
Well, it changes the demographics completely.
Yeah, probably with those who do come to the polls, cause town meeting, it's like up today's voting day.
Right, and everybody knows, and they come to the polls, and and that's how, then when you change it to a different date, those same voters that are very loyal on on town voting day.
People come, they see it's kind of.
They may not be able to take the time off, or they may not be able to, or I've heard people say, well, I voted the first time, I'm sure it'll go the same way. It just, it doesn't have the same uh, representation of the entire, you know, Virgin's population. It never is is as representative the second time as it is initially. That's one of the issues, is that it changes who comes to the polls. Then you only have people that are vested in that one issue, that have, you know, perhaps an agenda, as opposed to a a better feel of the whole, of the whole city.
Did you have another?
What for?
Did you have another um, number in mind?
No, I I was trying to think how we can arrive, all right, you know, I I'd ask for, you know, to get off square one here, cause we've kinda deadlocked. Show a hands of those that would be interested in a twenty percent. Okay, show a hands of those that would be interested in a fifteen percent. Show a hands of uh, those that would be at a ten percent. And seven, seven and a half? Back to five? I think the best ad, I think the best avenue is for you to go petition.
Right. Okay.
Because it doesn't sound like we're gonna come to a consensus.
I think ten percent.
Mike? Okay, for me to speak on this issue?
Definitely.
Having been a person involved in a couple of the petitions and revotes, I appreciate the opportunity. Uh, I agree with Peter, I think this should go to the voters, and I don't even particularly care that they have to do a petition. Because the reason I disagree with this is five to twenty percent, that's a three hundred percent increase. And the purpose for revotes is to increase participation in a democracy, so I agree with David, that this is, I wouldn't go maybe quite as far as Ziggy and and call it censorship. But it's, I always get nervous when people agree to give up their civil rights, their rights to recall a vote. And uh, I would counsel people to think seriously about this when it does go to a vote. And I can understand what Cheryl's talking about, you know, any any given day, when you go to measure something, it's just by the nature, you're gonna get a different group of people. You know, the what, just the weather alone can change the outcome of a vote, we all know that. And I know this isn't just about unification, but I know that with the unification petitions that I was involved in, out of those six total votes, over a thousand votes total were for no. And fewer than a thousand out of all those six votes were for yes. So I understand that, you know, every every time you have another vote, it changes who shows up for the vote. But I think, going back to that idea of participation, if you raise from five percent to a higher level to get a revote considered, you make it harder for people to participate. You make it harder to do, like Joan said, to become informed. It generated a lot of publicity, it was showing up in the Free Press and the Independent. The Independent had to publish articles to correct mistakes they'd made just before the last vote, uh, when they were making mistakes in in saying what the vote was about, and what the benefits were for the Virgin's taxpayers. So I would really encourage that it stay at the five percent, uh, so that it makes it easier for people to participate and become informed. And it's a pain after revote, I agree, and it's not easy to get petitions and get people signed, as Randy, you found, when you tried to get the the water thing revoked, it wasn't easy to get those signatures, was it?
It was easy to get the signatures at five percent, and then I was booby trapped after I handed them in, and they said, oh, no, it's ten percent, and then we went to wrangle with the state.
Ten percent is a hundred percent more than five percent, so.
Yeah.
Tara.
Sometimes I wonder, you know, shouldn't our voters take the time to really research these before they come and vote the first time? You know, what kind of, you know, I feel like as a school board member, as a member of the community, so many people just come here blind. Maybe increasing this to twenty percent would really make people feel like, I really need to pay attention to what I'm voting for. Instead of just voting blindly, like so many people do have the time. It's like, why aren't we more invested in our our community? Why aren't we reading the newspaper? Why aren't we reading the flyers that the school district comes home? Why are we reading the stuff that the city council comes, sends home? You know, why are we a community of uninformed voters, so that we have to have these revotes? If people really felt strongly the first time and did their research the first time, we wouldn't have to petition and revoke every time. So, are we as public service, and I will put this as myself in this category, not informing our voters correctly the first time? And and how do we research that and look at that then? You know, how do we?
I I think on those issues, you are correct. That's, that's where you're gonna go, is to educate the people. And believe me, it's the old story, you can bring the horse to water, but you can't make it drink. You can give them the information, you can send it to them in the mail, and it'll go in the recycle bucket, so.
David.
One of the, one of the issues relative to votes in general, that we unfortunately have no control over, is the legislative body, is the press. And this isn't a slam against uh, the Addison Independent, Free Press, um, any other media outlet. But the reality is, is that, um, you're correct, a lot of people are uninformed. But to a certain extent, there's also people that are misinformed, and that has absolutely nothing to do with this legislative body here. Now, some instances, they're misinformed because they only read the headline. In other instances, they're misinformed because it's incorrect information.
So, part of what Alex also wanted to convey is what Tara was saying, that it's so important to get it right the first time when you go to vote. That uh, if you can simply rely on the fact that you can change it afterwards, it it makes it almost too easy. And we really wanna encourage people to put their homework in the the first time around. Increasing it will make it just that much more difficult, won't preclude it from happening, but it will emphasize that maybe you wanna, you know, get it right the first time. Um, if the council was willing to do something like ten percent, I'm sure Alex and I would, I would check with her, but I'm sure she would be fine with that. But if even ten percent um, isn't agreeable, then we'll we'll go back to the drawing board, but I just thought it was worth talking to you about.
Peter.
You wanna try that as a vote? I I would, I would move.
Go ahead, make a motion.
Exactly the form of it, but um, that the city council.
Commit to an article.
Commit to an article, um, substantially in the following form, shall the city of Virgin's increase the percentage of voters required a petition for reconsideration or rescission from five to ten percent?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Has anybody here has actually taken a petition out beside me? And it was hard, just to get the seventy-five, that was hard.
If you have to work full-time, absolutely.
Yeah, it was hard. Many nights, cold weather and rain, so.
And, and speaking to the motion, the point.
Discussion.
The point of the, um, the point of this is, let's not us determine that, let's let the city voter deter, return, make that decision.
Uh, make a, I'm discussing.
Right, but.
Okay.
Yeah, we are discussing it, but the the motion is to let the voters decide, not the council. And I think that that's the democratic process, absolutely.
Can I just clarify that motion?
Sure.
Did you say five to ten percent?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yep.
Any, any other discussion? All those in favor of raising it from t, five percent to per, ten percent, raise their hands. One, two, three. You're gonna do it to me, aren't you? All those in, against it?
I'll vote yes.
You'll vote yes?
Yeah.
Okay. So, that's a, that's a fourth. Okay. Those opposed? Two. Okay. The yeas, and the the yeses have it. Okay.
Thank you, so, so, for the voters.
Yep, that will, at five percent, or ten percent.
Cheryl had another article.
You have another article?
I'm sorry.
No.
Is she gonna petition it?
No, no, I have to.
The other article, the other article that Alex and and I wrote, um, has to do with conflict of interest. And again, this is an article that, same same process, same same route. Talked about how do we get this done, and so it was, we agreed before the council, we're petitioning, so same scenario. It it came to our attention that, uh, we all, all the, all the municipalities and and boards, everything that that, every board that I'm on, and and Alex also, has a conflict of interest policy. So, we started researching it, and um, most municipalities have have uh, the policies or ordinances that um, basically govern actions and decisions that are made on the board. The school boards do, the Development Review Board, Plan and Commission, the Solid Waste Municipal Management Board that I'm on, also has a conflict of interest policy, but our city council does not. Alex and I thought it would be very helpful in conflict resolution, if if our city council did have a conflict of interest policy. The other boards that that we're on also have code of ethics, but we were just talking about conflict of interest to start there. Um, and this is really to add some transparency, and um, basically give the the voters a sense that uh, there there are, there's a conflict of interest prohibition that would help govern the actions of the city council. The Vermont League Cities and Towns, just make sure the word's there. They recommend that municipalities avail themselves of one or more of the local tools. And the first, I'm only gonna read the first two, which is conflict of interest ordinance, and there's a conflict of interest policy. And this really helps quell any questionable, any, if if people are questioning any actions of the city council, this really puts it to bed. You know, it's like, you know, this is our code of, our our conduct, conflict of interest, uh, interest, uh, ordinance or policy. So it just helps add some transparency and involvement of the of the residents. So there's a couple of ways um, to go about this, and that's what I'm bringing here. The process for adoption of the prohibition may be initiated by the select board, or by application of five percent of the towns' voters, according to the statute. So, this is the same process that we've just gone through with the five percent voters. It's, there's a couple of ways of going about it, a conflict of interest prohibition, um, is authorized in two thousand. So how we go about it is is up for debate. It could either be something that is developed internally, uh, by the select board, or it's something that can be petitioned by the voters. My understanding of it was, the process for adoption of a prohibition could be initiated by the select board or by application of the town. Through discussions with Mal, it seems a little bit unclear if you put an entire ordinance or policy before the voters and say, vote on this. Or whether or not you request, ask the voters if they want the select board to develop this type of of policy. So, we're kind of, as I was talking to Alex, um, we basically wanted to just open up the discussion with you. It doesn't have to be anything that's decided on tonight, but it's just to engage that, you know, engage your thoughts on it and see what you think about it. It's something that if I was sitting on the city council, I I would want to develop the policy myself, but it it could be something that is requested by the voters as well. I don't, it, I don't know if you, you wanna start asking questions?
Just, I think that this is certainly valid, but in the interest of time, I would like to propose a motion that we table this until.
Peter?
March.
Our, our, next meeting? Next meeting? That's a motion, have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second?
When's it, when's the next meeting, sorry?
We, we're back to regular scheduling, yeah.
Ten. Ten.
Ten, okay.
So, a clarifying question then, I would have to ask. What is your understanding, if, if, um, what would be an article?
Let me just say, a motion to table is actually not debatable.
Yeah.
And so you need, that's what, somebody made a motion to table, and it was seconded, it's not debatable.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
All right, it's, it's absolutely fine to ask when our next meeting is, that's okay, but but you, but it's, you can't discuss the 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 issue.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Okay. All right, so the, the uh, item has been tabled until?
Well, not yet.
Motion, motion. Motion is.
Motion to table, seconded, he just wondered about, cause typically, there's a motion to table until a date, all right? And so, no problem, Joe, you know, so Peter just clarified that that is actually a motion to table until next meeting, which is January tenth, all right? He did say, he did say next meeting.
Yeah.
And do you wanna know what it was, and so that's what it is. So, basically, uh, all you need to do now, Michael, is just have the board vote on the motion to table until the the meeting on January tenth.
All those in favor of moving this item to the January tenth meeting, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Peter, did you vote?
Opposed.
So it's four, two, two, so it does not get tabled. Go ahead, Randy.
Don't we already operate on a code of conduct, more or less, in the written code?
Yeah, I think one, yeah, I think the answer is, I'm gonna say no, Randy, as far as a written code, you know? I can tell you, I'm absolutely in favor of having conflict of interest policies, I think they're they're fine. I mean, how many times, you know, Zig has come to my office and said, you know, Mal, this thing is on the agenda, you know, is, you know, should I be, should I be voting on this? And and I'll say, you know, no, Zig, you really shouldn't, you know, because, you know, you you shouldn't be voting on, you know, Harper's outside, um, uh, consumption permit when you're the landlord. And so, no, you shouldn't, and you, you're, you're gonna need to leave the table and participate, all right? So we actually have been writ, we, the the city council for decades and decades and decades has has operated with an unwritten conflict of interest policy. And I, and I actually can't, you know, I think of, you know, David, you've certainly uh, recused yourself on things, and Ziggy has, and uh, Peter has, you know, so it happens all the ti, all the time. So, to, for the city council to have a conflict of interest policy, is that? So, to, for the city council to have a conflict of interest policy is actually good, uh, is good business to me. And, and Cheryl knows of that, you know, I think if the league is talking about a conflict of interest ordinance, I can tell you, there's no such thing, alright? Because, because actually the law allows a municipality for the select board to, to have the voters adopt a conflict of interest prohibition. And there's a very big difference between a prohibition and an ordinance, an ordinance is a law, and when the city council adopts a law, they have to determine whether or not that law is, is a, a criminal offense or a civil offense, and I don't think a conflict of interest policy is about fining and punishing people. What I do think that you need is, is, I think it would be good for the city council to have a conflict of interest policy, so that Ziggy wouldn't have to come and ask me if she had a conflict, she could just kind of read, read the policy. So I would say, I would, what I would recommend is, uh, is not acting, I can tell you Cheryl's uh request to include this article, I don't think it's an, an appropriate and legal article anyway, because I think the actual prohibition has to be written and submitted to the voters, and, and what her article is, is to, uh, is to ask the voters to approve uh, an ordinance that has never been written, alright, so, process-wise, I, I just, regarding, I don't care what the league says, I don't think that's the right thing to do. But I, but I, I'm certainly willing at the direction of the city council to come back uh to the next meeting with a, a so-called model conflict of interest policy, it'd be, it'd be very much modeled by the, uh, by the league.
Do you need a motion for that?
I'll second it.
Yeah, they have a really nice uh conflict of interest policy, it's like fill in your name.
Right, exactly.
Motion by Lowell, seconded by Randy, to have Mel come back to the next meeting with, uh, a model.
Model. Policy.
Policy, or prohibition.
No.
Policy.
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 Correct. Yeah, correct, correct.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. No, get your pen out.
Yeah, yeah, not really, that's just my, get my word out.
You're exactly right on the ordinance, but I just wanted to say one thing, because I think this sentence clears up really well, a policy and an ordinance have a small but significant di- difference. An ord- an ordinance has the force and effect of law, a policy is usually only advisory in nature and affords no direct legal remedy. But the interest, a conflict of interest ordinance, it is allowed, it, um, and that it says that uh if you want to have a list of other ordinances in other towns to, to let them go. So I think, I think an ordinance, a conflict of interest ordinance, does exist in other places, I'm not saying we need an ordinance, um, I'm just saying that I, I think they do exist, and, and there is a room for that, but a policy is good too.
Okay, very good. Thank you Cheryl. Next person that was going to be here, is unable to make it, Heather, uh.
Yeah, Heather's not, not here, and, uh, but I did, uh, she did send me a, um, an email today, uh, saying that she could not be here, and I don't think there's, needs to be any action on this, but, so I just shared that with you. Uh, as I explained to, uh, to Heather, uh, you know, relative to the city's winter parking ban, the, the process, to even talk about making any changes to our winter parking ban, you know, it's a two to three month process, winter, winter will be over by then, so, to me, you know, I think it's fine, uh, you know, I, I wanna share this with the board, and if, then, and if this is a topic of interest, uh, then it's something that we could put on our, if we wanna have it on our plate, we can put it on our plate, uh, in, in April. It doesn't do any good to really talk about it at, at this point.
I advise the public works supervisor, there would not be any action on this tonight.
Okay.
He called me tonight, wanted to know if he needed to be here, I said, no Jim, you don't. No.
It, it would seem prudent may not be the right word, but it would seem prudent, I'll have used that, that we don't have the police running around ticketing people for dollars in the beginning of the season when there's really no issue related to being on the street. But certainly for a period of time, it would make sense to, you know, to do warnings sort of thing, and I, I don't know whether that would help out a little bit here, but, um, you know, some, some reasonable judgment that, that isn't just automatically, you're on the street, we're fining you sort of thing, but there's some sensible relationship to being the, the situation.
One of the things that Jim has mentioned to me, and definitely Mel, that is, he actually wants to pull the December date and move it back into, to November, because some of the storms that come in. Uh, that's one of the things, I did mention to Jim this evening, um, you know, please think outside the box, nothing's gonna happen, but let's see if there's a way to meet both worlds. So, and he read the email that you sent to his home, and uh, he, uh, he said, he, he would give it some thought, see if there is a way to do that. And there again, we'd have to talk to the chief, I know the chief stands fairly fast with, with his rule, and it's hard to have the gray area understand, so. And, again, when the planning commission uh approves things, and the DRB approves things, they, they take and also say, you gotta do this, you gotta do that, and, and as long as the landlord is meeting their requirement, is it really the city and or the taxpayers' responsibility to respond to this? We ha- we would have to look at the cost of what it would take to put a system in place, and would it be fair, uh, to put that burden on the taxpayers, or to try to get it out the people that are doing the renting? So.
I, I've certainly had discussions with, with, uh, with George about, about this, and, you know, you know, whether or not there's warnings that goes on windshields, you know, before December one, or a little bit after, whatever, but, you know, he and, he and I both, uh, Joan disagrees with what I'm about to say, but he and I, it's really not about the money, you know, Joan, it's about the money. But really, it's, it really is not about the money. However, we have to make sure that cars are off the streets so we can do our job, alright? That's what we have to do, and, you know, one of the things that is very clear is that, uh, you know, people think that we should have an ordinance that says that you can't park in the street during a snowstorm, and they, and they really don't, they don't, and I understand why, why they would say that, but they really don't know what we do. And what we do is, not only do we plow when it's snowing, but our job is only started, and we end up having to remove the snow, some of the snow on day two, and then the rest of the snow on day three, alright, and so, if we had an ordinance that was only into effect when it was snowing, it really won't work. And, uh, one of the things, one of the things that we have to be, or I feel we have to really be careful about, is what I call moving a problem, alright? You know, right now, I can tell you, this is, this ordinance is extremely one-sided, alright, it's, it, it provides, the way that it's written, it provides no flexibility for the resident, alright? So this is, uh, this is way over here, okay? Now let's say that you adopt an ordinance that says that, uh, let's, let's shift it the other way, and said, you have an ordinance that says that you, uh, you only have to be off the street when it's plowing, alright? So, right now, who's complaining? Right now, the people that are complaining are people who, who live in apartments, don't have an off-street spot, somehow figure out what to do when they really have to, they figure it out. You know, winter, the winter parking ban is, is, uh, four months long, alright, so, right? December, February, March, April, four, oh, March, January, Feb- January, December, February, Mar- February, January, February, March.
Four months, four months.
Four months, yeah, I don't have any money, money. December, December, January, February, March, four months, okay? So, you know, during that four-month period, the apartment people are absolutely left scrambling, alright, and, and they, it's their job to figure that out, either the, the apartment dweller or not. If you shift it and give flexibility to those people, it's the businesses in the central business district that will get hurt, because we can't do our job. If you, if they, if they're out there, when we need day, day two and day three, we can't do it, so, you, you gotta be real careful that we don't just move the problem uh, from one place to another, you know, and, you know, I don't, I don't know if there is, you know, one of, one of the things I, I say sometimes, it's okay for everybody to be mad sometimes, alright, as long as everybody is equally mad, alright, 'cause you don't, uh.
About happy, is everybody happy?
There is something I'd like to bring up on that.
Yep.
It's like when people work at a restaurant, and sometimes they don't close, close till two o'clock.
Mm-hmm.
So that means people afterwards, they have to clean up and do their thing. Well, one particular party kept getting tickets, and he says, but I have to clean up afterwards, you know? It seems that when you, when it comes to that, if people know that this guy is working there, then eventually he is moving his car, you know? There's gotta be something for that, that means for some of these people, they, they get out, they have to clean after the two o'clock.
Yeah, the ordinance at one point, Zig, was one, it was one, one to six, three, thirty-four years, and the complaint wasn't about the cleaner, it was about, well, we serve till two, alright? Legally, legally, we serve it, so why should I have to move my car? Yeah, so let's, let's make sure they can drink another hour, you know, before they go out on the slippery roads.
Well, some of this is restaurants, I mean, cooking, meals.
But yeah, you know, I, you know, you, 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 and I don't know how you could write an ordinance where you, where you could get these little forty-minute waivers, can you?
I'm not asking an ordinance, but maybe make the police aware, if they're aware that that person's not gonna leave his car there, it's just that he's working, he's still working, and then he would be leaving.
Yeah. Right, right. Right.
And, but there's no way the police can recognize who is it, or who, they may not know who is and who isn't.
They can't, if they keep doing the same car, and the guy comes up and talks about it.
Okay. Mr. Rooney?
Speak.
You are.
I own real estate in Virgin, I'm a landlord, so I, I do pay taxes.
You, you're the one that, okay, go.
So when you say raising taxes, it's just to the landlords too, and the virgins pay those taxes through their rent, so, I just wanna make that point. Uh, the other thing is, um, I've lived here, well, I grew up here, and, um, there's a number of buildings in Virgin's where the parking is only on the street, so, you know, if you're gonna, if you wanna try and keep people investing in Virgin's and paying taxes, you gotta think about, maybe, part of trying to lease my apartment is talking with the residents about what they do in wintertime. And it's nice to have the street plowed clear, but they gotta think about it, you know, they've always gotta be thinking about it, and when I'm having that conversation with my residents, I, I can offer them certain solutions, but they've gotta figure it out on their own. It is, it's something that just precludes me from renting to maybe someone else who doesn't want to deal with it, and maybe going to Millbury or somewhere else. But I just wanna keep that in mind when you're thinking about this, maybe thinking outside the box like you talk about, coming up with a different solution, doesn't necessarily mean you gotta change what you're doing, but maybe offering something else, or thinking outside the box, and I don't know what that actually is, if it's whether it's maybe providing a certain spot for them to go to, and then walking to their apartment, and making sure that's cleared first, and they can park there after two or something, or, but this something else, and be thinking about it, as opposed to just saying, well, it's about the money and raising taxes on our taxpayers, because we are paying taxes, those folks are paying taxes, whether it's directly or indirectly, so, I just wanna make that point.
Thank you. Okay, um, so, at this point, nothing's happening, we've shared a bunch of information, and we'll be discussing this at another meeting. And now, we have Shannon Haggert, Chair of Planning Commission.
Thank you Mayor, thank you city council for the opportunity to come before you, just got three real brief things. First and foremost, I wanted to publicly acknowledge the work that Alex Maguire has done as Chair, um, she stepped, stepped aside, is still on the board, uh, basically she's having another child, uh, and we're at a critical point in the process, and so needed to, to move on. Second, we've, uh, we've been working pretty hard, there's a lot of documents we've been going through, uh, I was tallying up just earlier this week, just in meetings like this one, in the last six months, the Planning Commission uh has devoted about a hundred and fifty-nine manpower hours to meeting, plus countless hours outside of, of the meetings, doing research and reading. We're nearly there with the reconciliation of the regs to the municipal development plan. Um, our timeframe, just to keep everybody in the loop, is that by a month from now, uh, January sixteenth, we should have our final review of all of this, which we then will release to the city council and to the public, and we hope to have a public hearing on February twentieth, on or about that time, to go over the final and make the final presentation. And then the third item that I have is, just it, it came up this week, that according to Title twenty-four, Chapter one seventeen, Section four, 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 eight, which governs the appointment and powers of an administrative officer, um, it's a three-year term, um, Mel Hawley has been the zoning administrator, the term is up. In last night's Planning Commission meeting, we unanimously, um, voted to reaffirm his, his recommendation to the city council for zoning administrator, and just wanted to pass that information on.
Thank you very much, and, and so I'm gonna go right to item number eight, A, reappointment of zoning administration, I'd ask for motion.
Second.
Randy made it, Lowell seconded it, open for discussion?
Well, you've been absolutely fantastic resource, um, for somebody being on the DRB, I mean, I, I cannot tell you, just very professional, very organized, seems to know it all, although probably not quite true, um, it's just, it's been wonderful working with you.
Is this a three-year term?
Yes. Yeah, one, one of the things, thanks Peter, one of the things about ti- timing, uh, uh, is, I don't know how we ended up with this oddball date of August twenty-ninth or something, but, you know, one of the things that I would suggest is that, is that my appointment coincide with the fiscal year. And so, uh, I know the statute says three years, but to me, it really, I, I don't know what the three-year period has, has ever, ever been, and I, uh, what I would recommend to you would be to reappoint me for an approximate three-year term, that would expire, and I'm not looking to retire, it's not, and it's not what this speech is about, uh, is that I would, that my term would expire on June thirtieth, uh, something or other, I'm, I'm not good at my counting tonight with, with my, I'm surely not gonna do very good with years.
He probably had a poker night, and good thing he was here, 'cause he would've lost big time.
Not playing tonight. So, it's, uh, it's, uh, you know, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. Twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and the rea- and the really, the, the reason I bring it up that way is that there may, there may come, I'm, you know, there was a time, you know, I was the city manager and the zoning administrator, it was kind of, the job was kind of wrapped up into the same, but there was a time when, when the city council, uh, had those positions separated. And I think that, um, it's all your call and Planning Commission's call for them to be separated, and the, the reason why I'm suggesting that it be June thirtieth is that it corresponds with the fiscal year, because there's, there can't, if there, if there is gonna be a separate city manager and a separate zoning administrator, it, it can affect your budget. And so I just think it just makes more sense for my term to expire.
No, we just amend, they can amend their motion.
Addend the motion.
To make it go to, uh, July one?
July one.
June, June thirtieth.
June thirty, two thousand fourteen.
Right.
Agreed with you, okay, and both of them agree with the amendment? All those in favor of the motion as amended, say aye.
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 Opposed? So carried.
Congratulations, Mel.
Yeah, thanks.
Sympathy cards in the mail, Mel, you know me. Thank you Shannon for everything. You guys do put in a, a heck of an effort into it.
Yeah, you know, let me just say, say one thing, just, I wanna give everybody a heads up, and, you know, Shannon, you know, showed you his three-year binding here, and I, I wanna tell you what's headed your way, just so that you know, so you can plan ahead. You know, if you have some vacations and you need some, need some nice reading, it's, it's, it's gonna be in front of you. You know, obviously the rewrite of the zoning regulations or amendments, which turn, has turned into kind of a rewrite, along with, with a, uh, a new set of subdivision regulations. Remember that our subdivision regulations were first adopted in nineteen seventy-six, and there has been no amendments since nineteen seventy-six, and so, uh, we really, uh, those really had to be rewritten, and, and have been, that part is about done, I think Shannon, so, one of the things, so that you know, when you put the new zoning reg, the new subdivision regulations together with the new, uh, zoning regulations, it equals a hundred and fifty-two pages, alright, and I can tell you that, you know, we've kept track of all of our changes. The problem is, is that, you know, when you, when you make that many changes to try to produce a document for, for you, like in the typical, you know, insertions- to try to produce a document for, for you, like in the typical, you know, insertions are underlined and deletions are crossed out, this document could be four-hundred pages, alright? And so, we think that that would be a ridiculous thing to be giving somebody, but we could get it to you. So one of the things that we're, that we're going, that Natalie Steen from Land Works is gonna do for us is that there, even though, uh, there's a lot of changes, there's some sections that haven't been changed, alright? So what she's going to put together is a list, uh, of sections that changed. So that way, if you read a section and you think, boy, that looks different, you know? And you wanna go look at the old section, then you can go to the old zoning regulations and, and read the, uh, read the old one, uh, compared to the new one. But again, if you, you know, if you wanna see a deletions and inserts, it's real easy to open up two documents in Word, and they'll look at one another and a magic wand happens, and, and you, you've got it. So, the goal at this point, um, is for the Planning Commission to complete its work on this. Work actually isn't ever completed, but complete the document, uh, on January sixteenth. Adopt that dop, adopt, adopt that proposal for a public hearing, I'm gonna say towards the end of February. And I can tell you, as soon as they adopt it, you're gonna get it, you know, they're, you're not, they're not gonna wait around to get it to you, cause, you know, this is a big, this is a big document. So, the Planning Commission would hold its first, possibly only, but they could have more than one public hearing towards the end of February, and again, they might have more than one public hearing. And so that document is going to be officially, officially handed over to the City Council, possibly at the end of February, maybe March, maybe April. And once you get it, you're, the City Council's required to have at least one public hearing, not less than thirty days from the date of receipt, and not more than a hundred and twenty days after its receipt. And the City Council is obligated under the law to do something, uh, to, they have to take action on that document within a year of, of receipt, and if the City Council does not take action on that document, it just dies a natural death. And we just continue to live, uh, with our current regulations. I will tell you that once, once the City Council does warrant a public hearing, what, what I end up having to do as a zoning administrator for those next one-hundred-and-fifty days, any time that somebody applies for a zoning permit, they have to comply with both sets of regulations during the one-hundred-and-fifty-day period, alright? So if, if the City Council really wants to, uh, uh, not go back to the old regulations, because there are some things that are in there, if you don't adopt the new regulations within the one-hundred-and-fifty days, keep in mind that me and the DRB are going to be real, reviewing any new land development applications under the old regulations, and so, and I'm not, I'm not trying to do anything but tell you how it works, alright? I'm not, I'm not trying to pressure you to meet every Tuesday, you know, from now until whatever, but I'm just telling you how the, how the system, uh, works when you're in the process of revising your zoning regulations.
It will require some additional meetings, for sure, to get this dealt with. Okay, very good. Um, thank you, Shannon, for everything, and feel free, come visit us anytime.
And especially as we're gonna have more meetings to discuss all of this. I would definitely be here to try to be a resource for you.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, gonna jump right to, the warrants have been signed by everyone. Uh, I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes of November fifteenth, two thousand and eleven, City Council meeting.
Who makes that motion?
Lowell made the motion.
Second.
Ziggy made the second. Any omission, corrections, or errors? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Budget review, I'd ask that everything from here on go out at, at fast pace, cause we're getting close to the end. Mel, anything?
Uh, no, on budget, you know, it, what, what you have there obviously represents about fifty percent, uh, uh, of the year, cause it includes the bills, um, that are in front of you, except for, we did add insurance to it. But, uh, basically, if you keep fifty percent in your head, that's really where we should be at about this point in time.
Any questions, Mel?
I just have a question, maybe budget-related, I wonder if there's some, some protocol in the police department that requires them to keep a vehicle idling outside the office, especially on a weekend? I drove, often drove by on the weekend, and there's a vehicle idling out front. Uh, didn't know if that was some kind of an official, uh, protocol that there, that requires them to do that, or?
There is, I think, we had, we talked about that last winter, and apparently, it has to do with some equipment. No, it's something with the equipment that has-
That's what they said, they couldn't start.
Last year, the, the white Chevy, there was a problem with it.
That was the reason.
They shut it down, but the new, I think, it has something to do, and we can verify it. It has to do with some piece of the equipment that's in there, that it takes a while to bring it back up, if you end up shutting the vehicle down. But, again, let, let us clarify that with you.
I'll find out from George, I, you know, I, I certainly don't like cars idling there, you know, on a, you know, eight hours a day, but on the, on the other hand, uh, you know, there, there's gotta be some, a number of minutes in there that might be appropriate, you know?
I can understand if, you know, if it, if there's some equipment or something necessary, but if it's not necessary.
Yep.
Seems wasteful.
Well, I think, they said like in the winter, for the defrost, for the windows and all that, if they get a call, they can't get in their car and wait for the windows to defrost to get headed. So, you know, when it's bad weather like that, but I don't know when it's not.
We're gonna bypass, uh, committee reports, uh, unless somebody has something really pressing. Hearing nothing? Uh, public comment, any other ones?
Okay.
None? Uh, all business, Addison County Regional Planning Commission, recoupment for Virgin's delegate. Mel, anything?
Uh, uh, other than, I need to remind David here that, you know, because Aleth is gone, uh, and you're, you're, I mean, both of you are delegates, so at this point, you know, we have no representation down there. David, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm putting the squeeze here on you a little bit, alright, so.
Uh, police station sites?
Yeah, Mike, I have absolutely no problem in the spirit of time, you know, obviously, this is a big project, uh, you know, we can certainly, this is not something that I've ever looked, looked at, you know, having some bond vote in March, you know, uh, you know, but, you know, I want, I do want to, uh, keep the City Council moving on this project. It is a, a policy in our municipal development plan, uh, but again, you know, it was never my, you know, ambition to have a bond vote at March.
Let's, uh, move this item to then the, uh-
Can I just, just real quick, I'm sorry to keep drawing things, but, uh, there was a note in the minutes or, or in the, uh, Mel's agenda to please to review the, and I, I was unfortunately not able to attend the last meeting, so I was playing in the orchestra. So I don't know, I don't know where they are.
Oh, okay.
And if, if, if there are situations like that, somebody could just shoot an email out, or?
Well, and I, actually, I have a memo, um, you got my memo? Did you get the memo? I'll, I'll make sure, if this is on the agenda, I, I, I actually, there's part of the, the, part of the memo that relates to the northern, the northern gateway area, there's actually more information than I have about that. So, uh, I will wanna update that anyway, so I think Mike wants you and I decide whether or not this comes back to the agenda, you know, in, whichever meeting in January works, but, but I'll certainly, I'll certainly get that to you, Joe, if you, if-
I'll have to look through, maybe, maybe I-
And if you've got some updates, it wouldn't hurt to throw it out ahead of time.
Yeah.
Uh, before the agenda goes out, and that way it would give everybody another, another chance in case they didn't make it, or if they wanna revisit the sites again, so, okay? Uh, where are we? City manager's report.
Yeah, I've got five things, and I'm just only, only gonna bring up two. Uh, first off, uh, cause the other three don't, aren't important, but first off, Gary Lewis did give me a call, uh, either yesterday or today, I've lost track of the time, and he reported to me that the, that the Congregational Church has an annual, an annual meeting. He said, you, Joe, you, you're maybe on that board, or you're a member of the church. Yeah, so they have their annual meeting at the end of January, and at that time, they will take official action. Uh, and obviously, they would then be on our agenda, uh, in, in February. You know, obviously, there's no mowing going on right now, so there's not really any maintenance. So, I just wanted to let everybody know that if you wondered why wasn't on the agenda, and that's, and that's why. Uh, the other thing that I wanted to let folks know, and I, and I, and I wish I could say that I have this one-hundred percent put together, but I have been in communications with Casella relative to Asper, after Christmas recycling. Uh, you know, we had a mess on our hands last year after recycling, and what I have, uh, asked, uh, Casella to provide for us, uh, the week after Christmas is an expansion of service. And like I say, I, I, uh, I, I wish that I could tell you that this is what we've got, but I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, Dean speaks to me tomorrow, uh, to confirm this. But obviously, Christmas is on, on Sunday, and if we do not open the center until Wednesday, we will have the same thing that occurred, uh, to us, where we had traffic out to Route twenty-two A. So what I have asked, uh, for Casella is to operate the center on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday from, um, from, uh, whatever that normal thing is, is two until six. Uh, I actually might even discuss with them to have noon to six. Now, whatever, whatever I end up with there, you know, we'll get this, I'll get that to Judy, so we can get on her website. We'll get something, uh, in the Addison Independent to let people know of our expanded, uh, expanded hours, and I think that would soften the blow to some degree.
You and I haven't talked about what I had in mind, but I, I talked to Joe's wife and mentioned about a different flow pattern.
Oh, Joe Fortune.
Joe Fortune.
Okay.
So, um, let's, let's make sure we get a, a point where you and I can talk about that.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, I think it'll help a little bit, so, okay, what else, Mel?
That's it, I'm gonna pull the other three, they're not a big, not a big deal.
Uh, next item is, uh, eight B, warrant for unlicensed dog. Joni, we gonna need a motion on that, or just sign?
Uh, you can just sign it.
Okay.
Send it around.
We have, uh, looked at the wording of it and tried to touch it up a little bit, so it's less offensive. Um, and, uh, do you have a, a master?
Just use yours, they're all the same.
So.
The laws are on the back.
Yeah, just so folks know, know about this, you know, in the past, you know, you know, Joan presents this to you once a year, and what ends up happening is that actually more dogs move into town, and, and we try to get those new, new ones registered as well, and some people don't respond, and at some point, we need to, that, if they don't respond, therefore, we have dogs in our community that we don't have any proof of vaccination, so we take this, we take this seriously, and, uh, you know, I, I wish that, I wish that we, we wouldn't have to do this, to be honest with you, I just, I wish that people just responded letters.
It'd be nice if they just called, you know, and say, I don't have that dog anymore, or I'll be up next week, they, they just don't even know.
So you may, you may end up seeing, uh, a dog warrant, you know, three or four times a year. Uh, we have a, one police officer that's assigned to this, uh, glorious duty of knocking on people's door and, and in front of the kids, telling them that they're gonna take the dog away. It's not a, it's not a pleasant sight, but, uh, but actually, they, they, they come to City Hall. You know, one of the things I, uh, Joan and I, Joan and I have talked about this, you know, but I, I, you know, you learn something every day when you come to work, and I ran across a statute that I had never seen before, uh, is that there's a, the statute dealing with registering dogs is, there actually is a, uh, a, uh, a financial hardship clause in the law, that if somebody, uh, can't get their dog registered due to a financial hardship, uh, the, the registration fee can be waived. And if you don't, if you don't know this, there's a portion of a dog registration fee that actually goes to the state. Uh, the law enables a municipality to not only waive the city's portion of the fee, but waive the, uh, the state's. And I think that that's something, Joan, that we need to incorporate in your letter, you know? It's, it's no different than what I do when I'm trying to, when I'm taking somebody's house away, to let them know that abatement is a possibility. And I don't think we tell people that, cause sometimes, I'm not necessarily trying to defend these people, but Joan's sending them a letter saying, you gotta register a dog, it needs to be vaccinated, you gotta pay this twelve dollars. Well, some people don't have it, and they should contact us, you know? The Humane Society, there's ways of, cause all we, at the end of the day, it's not about the money. It's about, it's about the rabies vaccination, alright? And so, it's something that we're, we're, uh, learning, and, you know, we can change that, uh, to, to make it be a little friendlier.
I was gonna say, I didn't like the idea of putting dogs down.
Okay. Alright, the next item is, uh, the financial audit, two thousand and eleven, Mel.
Yeah, in the interest of time, I'm, I'm fine, you've got the audit, it's self-explanatory. I'll be meeting with the locally-elected board, you know, within the next week or so. You know, if anybody has any question, let me just tell you, one of the things, the, the good news, uh, in short, is we ended the general fund with a hundred and eighteen thousand dollar surplus. The bad news is, is that we needed a hundred and twenty-five to, to set the tax rate, alright? So we ended up seven grand behind, uh, behind the eight ball right out of the gate. You know, it's, you know, it's not great, but, uh, you know, we actually have already made that up in, in delinquent taxes, so, uh, that's probably the one thing that's a, a little too bad. I, I don't like falling short of forecast, and, uh, and really, it's, it's because delinquent taxes just didn't happen. Uh, you also heard the sob story that, you know, that Joan and I gave you, the way that our, our professional auditors deal with our, handle our investments, but other than that, every, every fund is in, is in good, is in the black, right? Black is good.
Black is good.
Uh, alright, they're all in the black, so that's good.
Uh, is this gonna come back for a discussion at some point? Uh, would it, would it normally come back at the next meeting for discussion?
It can, it can if you need, if you want to.
I, I've just got some kind of general questions, and again, they don't need to be talked about today, but if you could put on as all business.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Um, some quick items I'd like to deal with is, uh, two thousand and eleven boat count. Uh, there was two-hundred-and-eight sails, three-oh-five power, a total of five-thirteen, that's down over two-hundred from last year. I wanna get that report out before the crisis is over, or else we have more boats come in. Uh, Mel and I have selected a recipient for the town, uh, report dedication this year. I will announce it off-camera, cause we don't, I haven't talked to the individual yet, that they don't know yet.
Not that they have a say.
Not that they have a say, but it's nice to let them know. Um, and, uh, just to let you know, there was a great turnout for the holiday stroll and tree lighting, and I wanna thank Margaret for all that she does, and all those that helped her to make that day a success. And I have a letter that I'm gonna give to Joan, uh, from the, uh, Boy Scouts, uh, Troop Five Thirty-nine, expressing their thanks, uh, to all of us here, um, for the way we, they were treated and the experience they had at that. With that, there we go. Judy and I would like to, uh, thank the citizens, the families and friends that helped, uh, over the past year, and we wish the City Council, their families, the employees of the city, and their families, and, uh, citizens, Merry Christmas, and look forward to another wonderful and healthy and happy New Year.
I will make the motion to a gang.
Second. Motion by Lowell, second by Randy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's over.